Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
No.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Is there a motion to adjourn on the special session?
No move.
We are now adjourned on the special session. We will start our regular session of the Cranston City Council. At this time would last ask all persons to shut up their cell phones. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Yes.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Present. Is there a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved.
Motion made in second, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Clerk please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Will everybody please join and stand with me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Are there any public acknowledgements or commendations?
I have none.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you Council President. If I may, give the podium to Mr. Faloski, he's got some information for us. There's no objections from the council.
Mr. Faloski, please come forward. For you who don't know it, Mr. Faloski is a grant writer for the city council.
Good evening, council members and Mr. Council President. I'm happy to report that about a week ago, we found out that the city of Cranston was awarded from the Office of Energy Resources, $161,934 in grant money for a solar photovoltaic array system which will go on the roof of a wing of Cranston West High School. These are funds that were awarded through what they call the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, or the REGI funds, and they're coordinated with a grant program from the Rhode Island Commerce Corporation where the source of those grant funds are called the RAF funds, or the Renewable Energy Funds, which comes from the additional tax some of you may see on your utility bills from National Grid. Today, there was supposed to be a meeting of the Board of Directors of the Commerce Corporation at 5:00, but it was canceled, and at that board meeting, on the agenda was the award of the second part of the grant application, which was in the amount of $57,316, which together with the fund from the Office of Energy Resources, has a total grant amount of $219,250 for a photovoltaic array system at Cranston West. Now, I was told that I could announce the tentative award from the Commerce Corporation because there's never been a situation where there's been a staff recommendation to award a photovoltaic project to a school that has not been approved. So, at the forthcoming meeting, the rescheduled in July, it's fully anticipated that the remainder of the funds will be awarded to the city of Cranston. What's especially gratifying about this award is that with the photovoltaic array system, it'll produce electricity for the school and it's calculated to save approximately $10,000 a year in electrical costs. And the life of the system is 25 years, so essentially, you're looking at a $250,000 award plus an additional future savings of $250,000. And I would like to congratulate the leadership of Council President Lanny, Council Vice President Richard Santa Maria, and Councilman Mario Osito, who not only worked with me, but also built the bridges to the school department because they had to approve it through the school committee. So, congratulations to you all, and I'm very happy for the city of Cranston. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Faloski. Without your expertise, this probably never would get accomplished. Moving on, public hearings. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on any? Oh, before we have the public hearings, excuse me. Cranston Police Department, our local federal JAG allocation, Cranston Police Department K-9 vehicle acquisition project, present presentation by Captain Major Todd Patalano.
I don't believe he's here.
Well, since he's not here, we'll have to go on to the public hearings. Any members of the public who'd like to speak on any docketed item? You're allowed four minutes. Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Lori Dorsey, Seven Pilgrim Drive, and I wanted to talk, give my comments about the Cumberland Farms proposal. I am asking that this be put on hold until the traffic issues on Park Avenue be addressed. I know I've talked about this before. We have two different places on Park Avenue where there are lanes, are two lanes that come into one lane, and they've effectively created two drag strips over there where there's people racing on the right side of you to try to get past you. There's one over near Route 10, where Route 10 comes onto Park Avenue, and there's another one down near Parkview Junior High School that really requires a red light to be put there for anybody going to the right down Parkview Boulevard, but I guess that can't happen because the traffic's already bad enough there, and that would push the traffic all the way back on the other side of Elmwood Avenue. I've lived in this house for 35 years. I've never seen traffic as bad as it is now. It took me 15 minutes to get home from the Route 10 cutoff the other day. I have pictures that I can send you of what it looked like in front of Dunkin' Donuts this summer, this winter, when we had snow on the ground and cars were piled up outside onto Park Avenue that couldn't get into the parking lot of Dunkin' Donuts, and they just lined up so the school buses couldn't get by. Kids can't walk over there in the winter. Cars are always parked in front of Dunkin' Donuts, right directly underneath a "do not park" sign. And, no offense to the police, but I've called numerous times and I've never seen anybody ticketed there. So, we all try to come out of Mayflower Drive, and the cars are parked right there, and as we make the curve, we're almost hitting them every day, and I just see putting a Cumberland Farms of this size over on the corner there as one more big issue that's just gonna contribute to more traffic, and the street can't take it anymore. In the old days, people used to be able to cut down Wade Avenue down to Warwick Avenue. There's no way to do that anymore. Everybody has to go straight down Park to Warwick Avenue. And, you know, there's some serious problems going on in Washington Park right now. I know there are shootings that were reported in the paper today, and we just don't need that element coming over there. You know, our property values are already in jeopardy from everything else that Park Avenue looks like. And I agree with everybody that says that that corner's an eyesore. It's disgusting. But, I don't think that a traffic attracting Cumberland Farms of that size is gonna help the situation. Thank you.
I live at 1286 Naragansett Boulevard in Cranston, and I'm a proponent of the Cumberland Farms at the corner of Park and Warwick. I've lived in Edgewood for 25 years, and I don't know of any other proposals that have come on. I haven't heard of any other proposals that would be any better than the Cumberland Farms. And I see the stores that they're putting up throughout the state, and I think they're good-looking stores. I think they improve the neighborhoods. And with the current state of the street with a CVS and a Walgreens down the street one direction, and a Stop &amp; Shop and a Shores at the other end, I think it's in conformity with what's on the street. So, I also like to set the record straight. This morning, there was, in the article about the Cumberland Farms, it said that the mayor was credited with saying it was a gift from the heavens, while that email was mine. I said it was a gift from the heavens, and I think it's good for tax revenue, and I think it's good for Edgewood. Thank you.
Mr. President, Jonathan Stevens, 29 Windsor Road in Edgewood, and been retained by the Edgewood Waterfront Preservation Society as an expert witness. I have a master's in urban planning from the University of Rhode Island. I'm the former city planner for the city of Warwick. I also submitted for the record a site analysis based on conformity with the comprehensive plan. I think that may be part of your packet. First of all, Cumberland Farms is a terrific, family-owned enterprise, and there's no question they are quality company, and they retained a super professional team to represent them. However, I would say the common sense would dictate that you as council people would not give away your leverage, your negotiating leverage over development that may take place in that site. You don't have any obligation to approve tonight, and if there is a development plan that's in the makings, let's see what it is. So, as a decision-making body, I think that just makes common sense. I reviewed the JDL Enterprises' planning report, which is quality work, but I do disagree with some of the findings. Number one is the opinion on page 10 is based on preliminary and conceptual plans, which, again, no one has seen, at least I haven't seen them, I didn't see any evidence of those plans in the record. So, it's hard to come to a conclusion when there aren't any plans to review. B, the scale of this use would not be consistent with surrounding land use, except for the two government buildings, the fire station and the senior high-rise. The scale of the buildings in this area, most of the buildings were built between 1870 and 1930 as residential, 10,000 square foot lot, 5,000 square foot lot, and this would be over 43,000 square feet. So, I take exception with that. Most important, it fails to address the comprehensive plan land use principles on page three. Principle four is protect and stabilize existing residential neighborhood's quality of life. So, what you would see here would be the demolition of a number of buildings on this corner and replaced with asphalt surface, and a large 100-foot by 40-foot structure that's 32, I think 32 feet tall, and a huge canopy over gas pumps. Principle six is tailor, quote-unquote, tailor new public and private development toward recognizing and preserving the city's heritage. It's a nice gas station design, but it's for a highway scale. It would change, alter this intersection because the structures now are built on the street with the sidewalk, and this would create a huge open area. My findings are that this would drastically alter the neighborhood's character, and the existing property condition, as we know, is not terrific, but it's also a function of a property owner's interest in making money, improving the property. It's essentially a self-opposed hardship. And third is, this development is just out of scale, and it's a highway use. It may be work on Route 2 on Reservoir Avenue, but in this neighborhood, it's out of scale. The city council, again, should be open to negotiating with Cumberland Farms a smaller-scale development that doesn't overwhelm the site, but again, I would recommend that you not give up your leverage, your ability to leverage, and ask them to come in and negotiate upfront and figure everything out before you make a decision. Thank you, Mr. President.
Before we continue, Major Patalano has arrived, so if he can give his presentation, then we'll continue with the public hearing. Major, welcome to the chambers.
Good evening. I wasn't expecting all these people to come for my budget presentation.
You are a popular person.
Thank you for putting aside some time for me tonight. I'll get right to the issue. As part of our initiative to seek out additional grant funding and supplemental funding to help us in the police department and accomplish our goals and objectives, as part of 2015, we've applied under the local Edward Byrne JAG Memorial Fund grant, which is, every year, we apply for. This is a request, this requirement is, this request to have this presentation is to fulfill and meet the requirement to hold a public session as part of the grant application process, and we are fulfilling that obligation with the session today. The amount of the grant is $24,352, and we have chose to put this funding towards the partial purchase of a police K-9 vehicle. As you know, police vehicles are always something that's on the front end of our list to replace every year. So, the Cranston Police Department wishes to purchase a 2015 Chevrolet Tahoe. It will be a K-9 vehicle. As you know, we're gonna be adding a K-9 unit and are replenishing one that exists now. And this will partially pay for the purchase and expense of that vehicle. As far as the applicant's disclosure of this pending application, we do not have any pending applications for federally funded grants or subgrants that include requests for funding to support this same project being proposed under this solicitation. That is something we need to identify and publicize. The fiscal year 2015 JAG allocation application supports several issues, or actually five identifiers, one being vehicles. As you know, as I stated, we are gonna use this money for a partial payment of this K-9 vehicle, which the total cost is $37,462, so we would be additionally paying the remainder of $13,110. And, just to finalize a couple of more requirements, there are no personnel authorized or anticipated under this grant. There are no fringe benefits authorized or anticipated, no travel, no construction, no consultants, no additional costs, no other indirect costs. Strictly, this grant will be to support the K-9 vehicle, and we are requesting federal funds to pay partially for this expense. If there's any questions, we now open it up to the council, followed by the public if they have any questions.
Any questions from members of the council? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, council.
Matt Gendron, 139 Smith Street. I have to say, kudos to them for picking an American car. So, on the main issue on the agenda tonight, we're dealing with the Cumberland Farms proposal. This is the third time now that we've packed this room with interested citizens who've had a diversity of opinions. We just heard someone in favor. We've heard some people say that it's an eyesore, it's not great, but this isn't a terrific solution. I just asked the council two things. First, don't table this issue tonight, because that's gonna make us all concerned that at the next hearing, or the hearing after that, or at another hearing, you're going to untable it and then discuss it and vote on something without the public really being aware of it. So, that's the first request I make. The second is, we've heard general talk about tax values. We've had very generic presentations from Mr. Bolton thus far at two separate meetings at the Planning Commission and at the Ordinance Committee a couple weeks ago. We haven't heard any specific values about taxes. I asked questions of Mr. Bolton at the Planning Commission because we heard generically that this was gonna be a good tax revenue for the city. There's a bunch of buildings involved. I said, okay, well, I mean, we're replacing a bunch of buildings with one different building. That could be a net generator, it could not be. So, I went ahead and I took a look at the Vision Appraisal website for the properties in question, and I put together a table, and if it pleased the chair, I'd like to pass this around to the city council members tonight.
City clerk will...
And just to very quickly run through the basics, right now, there's four buildings or properties in question. That's the top half of this piece of paper. They explain that the current tax assessed value is 1.063 million. So, right now, we're getting property tax on over a million dollars of property value. And the two houses, and then the two commercial properties, which include, as the Providence Journal mentioned today, a number of buildings. And the bottom half of this chart is information about local Cumberland Farms or Golf Express Stores, either in Cranston, in Warwick, or in Providence, and I tried to capture the square footage of the stores so we could have a comparison. In the C4 zoning on Reservoir Ave., it's a $1.25 million value. That sounds better than 1.06. That's good. On their Cranston Street property, it's considerably less. It's actually $350,000 is their tax assessed value. So, that'd be a lot less than a million dollars. You know, we're probably gonna be somewhere in between because that's a smaller store, but I think the city council deserves to know more about the tax issues before they give a green light to a program like this. Thank you.
I live at 96 Ocean Avenue in Cranston. I'm an attorney, but I'm appearing here as a private citizen. As this gentleman just said, we are on the last leg. The Planning Commission voted it down, the Ordinance Committee voted it down, and it's up to you to decide what you want to do. You also heard from John Stevens, and he said in his report, and I'm gonna quote from some of it, "On page nine, Mr. Stevens detailed that, per RIDOT, the average daily traffic flow on Park Avenue is 13,700 cars, and on Warwick Avenue, 24,300." That's a lot of cars. Cumberland Farms' own traffic experts project that their proposed gas station would add 70 to 80 new vehicle trips per hour on and off the property at peak times. Over a 12-hour period, this means utilizing the 70-car rate, that daily at least 840 cars would be on the road, and the 80-car standard would result in 960 cars. Page nine of John's report details that in the past six years, at the intersection of Park and Warwick Avenues, almost 60% of all accidents occurred during the day, with half of the accidents being rear-enders, and 18% resulted in injury, with 42% resulting in damage of over $1,000. If you have any doubts that at the corner of Warwick and Park Avenue are unsafe, I suggest you read the letter to Mayor Fung from the State Traffic Commission dated August 6, 2012. And by the way, I prepared a report and would like to share it with you. Wherein, Mr. Prestawa states that on Warwick Avenue, between Park and Elmwood Avenue, the data collected for the four years ending in 2012 indicate that this area experiences a high frequency or pattern of crashes. We have four schools which are located only a couple blocks from the proposed gas station, St. Paul's, which is up the street, the Rhodes School, Chester Barrows, and Parkview Junior High. Stand on the intersection of Warwick and Park Avenue during school hours, and you will see the children being forced to scurry across the street with a crossing guard, standing at the Little Island at the intersection, having to deal with children coming from two corners. I think she deserves combat pay. Obviously, with the kind of statistics about accidents, we have parents very concerned about their children. We also have senior citizens like myself, and if you want to prove of how many people are opposed to this gas station, just take a look at the people behind me, as well as read the petition we have prepared, which bears over 200 signatures, and I believe one of my fellow neighbors has that petition. I will let you call the list to see the important people who signed the petition and are opposed to this proposed gas station. If I have not convinced you about the increase in traffic which this proposed gas station will generate, and the increased potential for accidents, then let's deal with aesthetics, economics, and practicality. On June 7, Ari Hustavides, I hope I pronounced his name correctly, appeared on the Rhode Island Foundation's hour-long executive suite program and made some interesting comments. And by the way, Ari is president of Cumberland Farms. He said that gas sales are declining. Well, the reason is simple. We are developing few efficient cars, and I'm gonna ask a very simple question. Why do we need another gas station? Okay? Because of declining sales, Cumberland Farms has shifted emphasis to fresh food, coffee, and drinks, and thus the need for a convenience store. Okay? Ari took great pride in the fact that Cumberland Farms can sell coffee for 99 cents a cup. And I went over to the reservoir station and took that picture, and sure enough, with their selling coffee for 99 cents, I think Dunkin' Donuts sells here for a little bit more. With that said, are you going to let Cumberland Farms, a company which started in Rhode Island but left its roots and is now headquartered in Massachusetts, displace local merchants, create massive traffic problems, and destroy a master plan by placing a monolithic gas station which is double the footprint of the firehouse across the way, so that it can follow its corporate policy of selling coffee for 99 cents? I hope not. You may ask, why are the master plan established C2 zoning for residential buildings on this site and C3 zoning for commercial? To my naive thinking, it was to stop monolithic gas stations with the big canopies and fluorescent lights from being able to sell coffee for 99 cents. Now, with that said, let us look at the number of gas stations we have in the immediate area of approximately one square mile surrounding this proposed gas station. There are five independently-owned gas stations, with one less than 1,000 feet from the proposed gas station, and the other one on Park Avenue within eyesight of this proposed gas station. At the corner of Post Road and Warwick Avenues, there are two gas stations, and in Pawtucket Village, there are two more gas stations. How many gas stations does this little square mile area need, especially with declining gas sales? Certainly not another one owned by a big national chain that has over 600 gas stations throughout the country. At the southwest corner of the intersection of Warwick and Post Avenue, there's presently a vacant gas station. Let them take that one over rather than tear down existing structures, displace merchants who have been, who have roots in the community, and cause people who have lived for years on Henry Street to move because they do not want to deal with a newly erected monstrous gas station behind them. In law, we have a legal term for what this is called. It's called commercial...
Excuse me, you have four minutes.
Okay, I'll just say the last part. It's commercial blockbusting. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Deborah Fogarty Weathers. I live on Clifdale Avenue. I want to preface all my statements, first of all, by stating I'm pretty close to my age, which is a little embarrassing, but I've been an Edgewood resident for 55 years plus. Let's not do the math, but plus. Cumberland Farms abandoned Edgewood years ago, for those who've lived there as long as I have. Cumberland Farms used to be on Broad Street. They used to have a little store right at the bottom of Chiswick Road, I'm not sure the name of it. I'm not sure the name of it, but it was there. We brought milk in with glass bottles. We rinsed them out, we brought them back. My dad got more milk and rinsed them out. They left. They abandoned Edgewood. They left. That's okay. We don't miss them. Sunnybrook Farms came into Patuxent Village. We were all set. We got our milk. But they left. No big deal. They come now. When they leave, they'll leave it a mess. They're going to leave tanks in the ground with the chance of risking our children's lives, potential risk of leakage when they pull those tanks up. Those tanks are going to be there for 50 years, and we're stuck with it. If this doesn't work, too bad for us. Sorry, folks. We didn't mean it. We wanted you to have a gas station, but too bad. You got it now. Once this gas station is here, it'll always be a gas station. For those people from Edgewood who remember Steve's Pizza, Steve's Pizza was there for years and years. Steve's Pizza's not there anymore. Bob's Pizza came in. There was a dance studio there. The dance studio became a yoga studio. The yoga studio became a shoe store, a tailor, a thousand other things. But once the gas station gets there, it'll always be a gas station. We have no choice. Give us something we can work with. Give us businesses that will come in, little restaurants, little boutique restaurants. Patuxent Village is thriving. Now, I could bring up all the issues that other people have brought up regarding rats that are going to be coming in because of the garbage that's going to be floating around the city. Somebody mentioned the quality of life. I live on Clifdale Avenue. I'm going to listen to diesel trucks running 24 hours a day. I'm going to lose the stars because at night, those lights are going to be shining. I can't see them because of the city. Imagine having the city 200 feet from my backyard. I have a granddaughter who lives in a house 200 feet from that gas station. What happened to the rule that a gas station has to be 300 feet from a residential home? No one's discussing that. I don't understand. I also don't understand the air pollution, the drainage, the oil runoff. Where's this all going? I mean, this isn't the movie The Dome. This stuff flows down our streets, into our sewers, into our bay. Why are we doing this? I don't live on Narragansett Boulevard. I don't live on Ocean Avenue. I live on Clifdale. So the cars that the woman's talking about, who can't make it up Park Avenue at 40 miles an hour, shoot down my street at 60. They don't stop at stop signs. They just keep right on going to beat the light, to beat the traffic. That's without a gas station. Imagine putting a gas station in there? It's going to be atrocious. We lived in this neighborhood because there weren't gas stations there. I was talking to a fellow neighbor who said, "Well, the bay stinks." Well, when I moved into Edgewood, I knew the bay was there. I knew the bay was there. There was no gas station there when I moved in. I don't want this gas station. I don't deserve it. I didn't sign up for it, and I don't think it's fear that it's coming to my neighborhood. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Ressiger, and I have looked at 50 Malvern Avenue for 34 years, and I remember when the trolley tracks were still on the street. And I also remember when Hanush Jewelry, which is down on Route 2, opened a store there, and they couldn't understand why nobody came, and there was no parking. So I've printed out aerial photos of the site for you to look at, and I walk over there and I take photographs, and I've determined if you tear down Abbey's TV service and the garage is there, you could create a lot of parking, and you could have viable businesses. There's going to be millions of people coming to this country due to the mess in the Middle East, so maybe another Hanush will show up, and they'll have parking, and we can have a nice jewelry store there, or a karate studio, or something or other. But I really don't want a gas station there. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Ledefian, and I live at 127 Warwick Ave, Cranston, at the corner of Warwick Ave and Henry Street. First of all, I'd like to say, my family and I have been Cranston residents for over 60 years in the same house. There's been a lot of traffic on that street, a lot. When I was growing up, I used to play on Henry Street, and there would be cars coming down that street because they thought it was a cut-through street then. They come through even more now, especially now that they had made it from two lanes down to one lane. The traffic is crazy at all hours of the day. When I'm out watering the grass in the morning, there's just, there's backup there. I try to get out of my street, and I can't. I have to wait till two changes of the light now, as it is. Also, the fire station that's next door, I noticed that in the past and in the present. The other day, I went by, and when there's a function down at Roads on Patuxent, they don't leave a space for the fire engines to get out. It's a solid line, and I feel so bad for them. I mean, God forbid there's a fire or anything, they just, they won't be able to get out. It's too crazy. There's a lot of people that cut down my street, as I said before. It would affect me the most. I'm on the corner, and the house that abuts my backyard would be the beginning of this gas station. It's, I mean, there's nothing. I have a corner, that's it. I see people, cars, up and down. I just put bushes in the front because my other bushes were deteriorating. I just spent oodles of money. I just fixed up my house. After I did that, just three months ago, I got a letter in the mail, "My house depreciated $100,000." $100,000. I was like, "What is that? That's crazy." And that's just my house. I mean, I talked to my neighbors down the street. His house depreciated $60,000. I mean, it just, it can't get, I refuse to let it get like the slums. I refuse that. When they were fixing the water pipes, when the Providence Water came, then they came to hook up, the traffic was horrendous. Even before, when they came to fix the water pipes, when there would be an accident on the corner, or if they were painting the lines, the traffic then, before they even made it go down from two lanes to one lane, the traffic was crazy. It was even worse to get out of my street. And it was even worse that the people tried to cut down my street, that I had no idea, that they didn't even read the signs. In regards to Cumberland Farms, there would be rats, garbage, the trucks would be out at 3 o'clock in the morning or whatever, and I don't want to hear that out my window at that hour. I want to sleep. I don't want to get up and hear that noise and the smell, and it's just, it just would not be good. And lastly, I think it would be also too big for the corner. It doesn't fit the neighborhood at all. It just, it would be like this big behemoth stuck in the middle of a nice neighborhood that doesn't even belong there. So I would appreciate it if you would vote no for the Cumberland Farms on the corner of Park and Warwick. Thank you very much.
Mr. Council President, members of the city council, my name is Carlo Spirito, and I live at 1284 Narragansett Boulevard. I'm not here to ask you to vote for or against this proposal this evening, but I'm asking is to lay it on the table for a couple of months. We need more dialogue between the developers and the neighbors. Maybe we can get this thing going. That corner is an eyesore, and we need something to happen there. So again, I ask you, lay it down the table. Look what happened to Stop &amp; Shop. After two or three years, they got together, one of the best developments we've had. Look what happened at CVS. You're laughing. Many of you go there. I see you. So, again, let's have more dialogue between the developers and the neighbors, and maybe we can get something out of this. Thank you.
My name is Sheila Ressiger. I live at 50 Malvern Avenue, which is about one block away from this intersection. I've lived there for over 34 years. I've driven through that intersection countless times. I've walked through it countless times. It is a very difficult intersection to begin with. I cannot imagine what the additional traffic, the noise, the pollution, and everything else that goes with a mega gas station on that corner would bring. I'm in solidarity with the other residents that are speaking here tonight, that I adamantly oppose this idea. I think it's wrong for that intersection. I realize that the intersection does need improvement. There's no question about that, but I don't think this is the way to go. The mega Cumberland Farms that's at the intersection of Park and Reservoir fits in there because that's a whole commercial area. This intersection is a completely different thing, and as other people have said, it would change the character of the neighborhood. I'm totally opposed to it, and I hope that you will vote against it. Thank you.
My name is Sam. I live in Cranston. Terry Phillips Court, Cranston, Rhode Island. My house taxes is about $16,000. My gas station down the street, $13,000. I've been paying about $30,000 a year of taxes for the city of Cranston. I think I have to say something. Since the open Reservoir Avenue gas station, my business went down in half. I'm back on my payments, I'm back on everything. I have three kids. They go to Cranston Public School. I'm here to, you know, another gas station down the street will put a few gas stations out of business, not just one gas station. One gas station will be big and huge enough to put a lot of people around the gas station, out of business, and around the gas station. You want to affect one gas station for a lot of people leaving this town, and they pay taxes more than one. Cumberland Farms want to pay taxes. They give you something to go inside of coffee, like what the gentleman said, 99 cents. You go there, and they, whatever they want to do. I don't know how much they want to generate in taxes for you guys, but me, a lot of people here, they pay more taxes than Cumberland Farms. They bring people, like what they say, another guy say, that they're corporation en masse. They're not here anymore, and I don't know what you want to do, guys. Gas station will affect everybody around, convenience store, gas station down the street, like what they say about Ford five. I mean, they bend the two gas station here. Everybody knows me, I think, around here. I try to fight for my life, guys. I work every day 16 hours. Just consider that. I'm not big corporation. I'm a small businessman, hardworking guys, try to raise my three kids, try to make a bunny here, bunny there, to make money. I used to do 100,000 gallon. My gas station, when they opened here, I'm doing 50,000 gallon. I have a proof for you. My business went down. A lot of people's business went down. Big gas station go up. We're going to be out of business, guys. You're going to build one gas station, you want to see a lot of gas station around, empty lot, and you will be the reason for that, because you're giving those opportunity to a big corporation to build a big gas station, to put us out of business. And I will, I will give you, you are responsible for us to be in business or not, when you give a guy like this, big corporation, a license to operate a gas station. Have a good day, guys.
My name is Maral Tashen. I'm the owner of property on 87-95 Warwick Avenue, Cranston. I'm sure you guys get sick of me. This is, I've been here the last two meeting, and this is the third one, and I hope this is it. I've been here since 1989. I worked hard, and I've been working hard to keep up with my business, to raise my family. I am a single mom. I have my two sons. I raised them in a gas station. I cannot afford, close my doors and say to Cumberland Farms, "Come on in. Welcome to my neighborhood." It's impossible. I worked hard. I've been working hard. I paid all my taxes. I live in Cranston. My business is in Cranston. I'm a taxpayee in Cranston, and it's my right to stay in here and tell Cumberland Farms, "Go find somewhere else." They own more than 400, 500 gas stations. I only own one gas station, and I'm living out of it. Please, 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 help me. Let them stay away from me. Let me raise my kids. Let me do my business. Let me help my neighbors. They all love me. We're all family. We all work together. I don't think they have a complaint. I think I'm fair with my price. I think I'm fair with my price. I think I'm fair with everybody. We grew up together. They know me, they know my kids. I know them, I know their kids. We're all family here. Please, Cumberland Farms, stay away from our neighborhood. And I know you guys, you're going to put something there. I mean, you can put any other businesses, just build property, build houses, build, help the small businesses like to open up something else there. I don't think we need another gas station. There is more than one, more than two, more than 10 gas stations around there. How many gas stations these people, they need? I don't think they need more than this. I know they are big, they look good, maybe better than my gas station, but I cannot afford them. I cannot afford, close my doors. Please, as a taxpayee in Cranston, I need you with me, not against me. I appreciate that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Stephen Pills. I live at 35 Anthony Drive. I'm chairperson of the Conservation Commission. And as this council evaluates the zone change and the comprehensive plan change, I'd like to impose that the council consider a very strict standard to the landscape standard that the city currently has on ordinance, to minimize the conflict with adjacent uses, driveways, homes, school buildings, streets, intersections, and other similar features. And specifically to the residents, to the north, east, and south, that the buffer, the landscape buffer, be imposed, not just the five-foot minimum, but the 25-foot minimum as a standard, to buffer and offer some mitigation to noise, glare, and adverse activities that would be imposed on the residents in that area. Thank you.
My name is Dorian Bowen. I live on Roseland Avenue in Cranston. I spoke last at the last meeting. I hope I'm not, I hope I'm not last again. Are you gentlemen listening to what's being said here tonight? Are you listening? I don't know if you are or not. I hope you are. Edgewood is a unique place. Driving here today, Parkview Field was full, softball's going on. In the fall, you'll see football going on. It's a walking neighborhood. People walk. They walk their dogs, they ride their bikes. It's a neighborhood of days gone by. You come off of Route 10, you go back in time. It's a very, very special place. It's not a place for Cumberland Farms on the corner of Warwick and Park. Mr. Spirito, one of the gentlemen said it was in conformity. For all in Warwick Avenue, it's not in, in Park Avenue. It's not in conformity. You cannot put a huge gas station in that area. I walk every day in the area. I've talked to so many people, a lot of them are here tonight. They don't want this gas station. I've lived in the neighborhood all my life. I see what can happen. I've witnessed children being hit by cars. I saw a mother drop to her knees because she couldn't see her little boy lying in the street because she thought he was dead. That was before Cumberland Farms. I've had to stop and pick up elderly people who are walking from Park Avenue residence to Warwick Avenue to take the bus or to walk to CVS because they don't have cars and they have to walk. God only knows what's going to happen to those poor people when they have to try to navigate Cumberland Farms. They have to rest at the wall at the end of my street because they don't have enough energy to make it to the corner, never mind to the bus stop. And you want them to have, try to pass cars flying in and out of Cumberland Farms, who's not going to care less about the little old person who's trying to get to the doctor who's at on the 1 o'clock bus. It's not a good spot for this Cumberland Farms. It's not a good spot for this Cumberland Farms. There's plenty of areas for Cumberland Farms. This is not it. Did you know that one street away from this designated project, there is a tot park, a playground where basketball, and mothers walk their carriages and their kids on their bikes and their dogs? And there's baseball. That's one street away. The next street is the backyard of an elementary school, for crying out loud, where kids have to walk to school. Do you know those fourth graders have to go to Barrows next year? Do you know what that means? That means they have to pass Cumberland Farms to get to school. Do you know that that's probably going to, you now probably see another child being hit by a car. It's not the spot for this station. Do you know that there are people on Cliffdale? There's a gentleman on Cliffdale has Alzheimer's. I picked him up trying to get to church. He was lost. He was confused. He's walking in the street. "Where are you going?" His name was Antonio. He spoke Portuguese. Brought him to church, saw his budget, figured out where he belonged, got him home safely. That was then. Will that happen now? I don't know. Antonio's still walking the streets. He walks all the time. Everybody sees him. Everybody knows him. Everybody takes care of him. Do you know that there are children on Cliffdale? The one Tuesday's child, wonderful young man, got some developmental issues, new to the neighborhood, loves crossing the street to visit his friends, but doesn't have the alertness to see if any cars are coming. What's going to happen to him, new to the neighborhood? Now, the young man, he's also got developmental problems, maybe autism, I'm not sure. He's got issues, serious issues. This is a neighborhood where we care, and we love one another. And I don't want to see anything happen to these people. You want to talk about economic development? You go down All Mall on a Friday or Saturday night, Arabic food. They come from New York and Boston. I talked to a man named Ahmed Friday night. Place was packed. People have to go to contain and standing and eating on the hood of their car. You can't get near this place on a Friday or a Saturday night. They're coming from New York and Boston, Ahmed told me, because the food is so good. Walk down the village. What about the new Edgewood Cheese Shop? What about the Chai Bay that make noodles and tea? What about the Elephant House that sells crepes? All these unique, wonderful new businesses. Where did the mayor come from? Let's go to the mayor. Where did his family start? They started their own business. He started from the same way that these people started.
One minute, please.
What are you going to do? You're all politicians. You're all getting, the project managers, the developers, you're getting the calls, you're getting the pressure. We know it. The backdoor deals. Please change your vote. Vote for us. Don't listen to them. Listen. November's going to come. We elected you for a reason because we trusted you. We believed in you. We counted on you. This is why we're here today, for the same reason. We trust you. We believe you. We know you're listening to us. But listen to us, not the guys who are making the calls behind the back doors. We understand you're under pressure. It's hard. But you guys, it's amazingly hard. You're here every night. We're here every night.
Your minute is up, please.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pat April. I live at 130 Park Ave., Cranston. This is my third time up speaking, and my son and I turned in a petition with over 200 signatures on it opposing the Cumberland Farms. Having said that, this development for Cumberland Farms proposal will be detrimental to our lovely Edgewood neighborhood. It would definitely be a safety concern for our children that cross this intersection on a daily basis and have a huge impact on the walkability that we now have in our neighborhood. This is an extremely busy intersection, as you all have heard about from the accident reports that we obtained from the Cranston Police Department. Ironically enough, there was an accident on Friday afternoon, June 19th, during the regular, heavy, everyday, busy traffic hour. Someone's bumper was taken off by the fire truck going out on a call, and they had nowhere to go. The fire station will absolutely be dangerously impacted, as well as any neighborhood traffic, if this proposal is approved. We have four schools in the area to think about, three convenience stores that have been here for years and who have also helped many families out when they were down on their luck. We already have six gas stations within a one-to-two-mile radius of this intersection, not to mention the effect this will have on property value. Also, the businesses that will have to relocate, some that will have to close their doors, which will lead to vacant property, sitting waiting to be adorned with graffiti. It just doesn't make any sense to bring in a corporation of this magnitude that simply does not fit in at this site. If I'm correct, Cumberland Farms stated they will employ about 22 people, therefore putting about the same number, if not more, in the unemployment line. Where is the logic here? There are endless possibilities for the owners, Park Associates LLC, to make changes so that there is parking, so businesses that do come in will thrive. We could possibly bring even some of, a little of Patuxet Village up into this intersection. I know of neighbors who want to open a restaurant there. I know of someone who offered, she wanted to open a Zumba studio there. There's endless possibilities other than Cumberland Farms. The Director of Administration for Mayor Feng made it pretty clear in supporting economic growth. What happened to supporting small businesses? I will close by asking you all to please take into consideration all of our valid concerns, all of us who are here to oppose this, and reject this proposal for the sake of the Edgewood residents, our safety, more traffic congestion, our businesses who we support 100%, and let us keep our beautiful neighborhood from being supersized by Cumberland Farms.
Good evening. My name's Diane Lewis. I live at 183 Park Ave. I've been a Cranston resident for 29 years, and I'm before you for the third time again tonight also. We are appealing to you to save our neighborhood. The Cumberland Farms that you want to build at that intersection is totally outsized for that area. At that particular intersection, you have a fire station across the street. There's a ripped-up bus stop. There is a children's crossing guard. There is a convenience store directly across the street that you are probably going to put out of business if Cumberland Farms comes in here. We have enough gas stations. We have enough convenience stores. As it is right now, the city plan is designed for either a convenience store or a gas station on that lot. And I'm sure that there was some type of wisdom in going in, you know, when you guys made that plan. We would like, as other people have said, something like Patuxet. We know you want economic development. We know you want to revitalize the area. But please, guys, find something else. A Starbucks, a medical lab. It's like you have the plaza. You can have, it's like maybe tear down one building or so. You could have extra parking. This is not the right thing, like for this corner. So we're asking you to please, please, honor the neighborhood and vote down this proposal. Thank you very much.[1099.83][1099.83][applause]
Good evening, everybody. My name is Denise Marsinko. I live at 9 Ivy Ave. I've been a resident of Edgewood 95% of my life. I grew up knowing that there was the bicycle shop there, Abbey's TV, all kinds of other things that were over there. I've seen messages on my Facebook page from some of my Facebook friends right there in Edgewood who are for and against Cumberland Farms being there. They're saying, "Why can't the city of Cranston get the owners of the property on that one side to clean up the businesses?" Some of them are empty. Some of them say for sale. Some of them have said for rent. You know, they did it on the other side of the city, on Cranston Street. Couple of years ago, they made all the small business owners clean up their spots, clean up the front of their stores. Same thing in Washington Park. They went after them. Clean up the sidewalks. Clean up the front of your stores. Paint them. Clean the windows. Do something. But, you know, a Cumberland Farms, as other people were saying, these small businesses, I went to them. I needed milk at times when my husband was out of work. He works for a small construction company out of West Warwick that's run by a single family. You know, I needed milk. I wasn't eligible for food stamps. I needed pizza. I'm all pizza fed my kids. They gave them sandwiches. They gave them pizza when we needed it. You know, sometimes, you know, the guys at the gas station gave my husband credit for gas. I don't live off of credit cards. I don't own a credit card, refuse to. So I would rather do business with Speedy. I would rather do business with Alex. But, you know, it's just not a right spot for Cumberland Farms. They're not there to help our neighborhood. They're there to hurt it. They're there to put the gas stations out of business and dunk in doughnuts. That's all I have to say.
Hi, my name is Melissa Kearns. I live at 50 Wade Ave. I'm not as long a term resident in Cranston as some of these other folks, but I share all their sentiments. I'll just keep it short and sweet. I also oppose this Cumberland Farms, and I endorse everything that my neighbors have said. It's really what makes this neighborhood so special.
Hi, my name's Josh Cottone. I live at 39 Morland Ave. I just, I think we all agree that the site, that what's there on that site now is an eyesore and in need of redevelopment. But I think in this part of Cranston, where we have, you know, density, population density, we should be focusing on walkability and not adding more car infrastructure, which is what a gas station absolutely is. So let's not make the mistake, I urge you not to make the mistake, of saying that good enough is better than nothing. It isn't. You know, we already let that happen a few years ago at the corner of Norwood and Broad with the CVS. And CVS is a good company.[1286.66][1286.66][applause] They're a local company. They're a great company. But we let them put in a suburban cookie cutter store that caters to cars and not people, and let's not let Cumberland Farms, you know, do the same.[1298.75][1298.75][applause]
How you doing? My name is Mark Nunes. I've lived in Edgewood all my life, basically. I came here in '92 from Connecticut. 171 Park Ave., 182 Warwick Ave., 172 Park Ave. I agree with everybody in this room. There is no way that that is, that could be possible, the magnitude for it. A lot of people haven't brushed, I feel crime would come to that neighborhood as well. If it's a 24-hour one, we have people in and out of there at all time. We have people coming out of the club, coming into our neighborhoods, stumbling into our other neighborhoods. Henry Street directly affected. No one will be able to sleep ever if there is a Cumberland Farms in front of there or behind their neighborhood at all times. This guy right here owns the Quick Mart. This guy will be out of business in five seconds. He'll never be able to sell a cereal box in his life again if that ever happens. There's gas stations around here. Like they say, they let people have their credit. This is a family. Edgewood is a very preserved neighborhood. It is beautiful. I'm 30 years old, and I realize this. You know what I mean? So I speak on behalf of anybody in this room that we don't need that. Give us a restaurant. The Miami Diner used to be over there. That was decent. You know what I mean?[1376.04][1376.04][applause] We are, I think, I think everybody here is smart enough to give us something nice, a restaurant. You know, like we got a crepe spot in the village. We got JJ Spooner's around. That is Edgewood, not a gas station the size of Godzilla. That's what I got to say.[1395.83][1395.83][applause]
Mr. Council President, members of the council. My name is John Bolton with the law firm of Hinkley Allen. I represent the applicant with respect to these two petitions related to an eventual proposed Cumberland Farms development. I want to start out by saying, and I know many of the councilmen here this evening were at the ordinance committee, so I'll try not to be repetitive, but I want to summarize a couple of things, and I'll stay within your four minutes, Mr. President. Most of this property is already zoned commercial. We're not taking a residential property and zoning it, rezoning it commercial. Most of it's already zoned commercial. If the relief that is sought is granted this evening, that's just the first step of a multi-step process. This project will still require a special use permit by the zoning board, and then a site plan review by the Development Review Committee. As Mr. Stevens said, that's when we would present a specific site plan, seat comments on landscaping, lighting, et cetera. With respect to the intensity of this development, there is over 25,000 square feet of commercial space on that property today. What we're proposing is less than 5,000 square feet, one-fifth. At the ordinance committee, our traffic expert, Ms. Schlobett, testified and presented a report that indicated there would be no material impact on the traffic in that area. And really, that results from the fact that, and if you look at your personal experience, it's a gas station. People don't go out of their way to go to a gas station. They go on their way to work. They go on their way home from work. So those cars are already on the road that will be utilizing this. So if traffic is a concern today, this is the perfect use because it doesn't generate new traffic. You have pass-by traffic. Our planning expert testified that the proposal is consistent with the comp plan and also that this proposed development would not alter the general character of the area. The list of failed businesses that have been on this property is varied and long. A majority of this property, and this, I think, is the most important point. A majority of this property has been vacant since 2003. Not one year, not two years, not five years. 12 years this property has been in this state. There have been several comments, both by the public and by certain members of the council, about we shouldn't pass this because we don't want to hurt existing business. I would respectfully remind the council that protectionism, protecting existing businesses, is not a legitimate basis for land use decisions. Simply put, competition is good. That's where our entire American economic system is based on, competition. And I would pose this rhetorical question. What if, when these existing businesses that are there now, whether they came five years ago, 10 years ago, or in 1989, what if when they came to open their store, they were told, "Sorry, you can't come here. We have to protect all the people that are already here"? How would that have made them feel? But now they'll come before you and ask you to do the same thing? Opportunity... Mr. President, I didn't interrupt one person who was speaking.
Let him finish his comments, just like he let everybody here finish their comments.
Thank you. Opportunity is a door. And once any of us pass through that door and experience, and are fortunate enough to experience some success, we have no right to slam that door behind us and say, "Sorry, you can't come through this door now because I want to protect my business, and I don't want any competition." That's not right. That's not who we are. That is not who we are as a city, and that's not who we are as a country. The proposal before you is an opportunity for construction jobs, for permanent jobs, for responsible, first-class development has been, already been demonstrated by this applicant in other parts of the city. And it's an opportunity to take a property that's been vacant for 12 years and to revitalize it. And because of those reasons, I respectfully request that you consider this proposal and allow us to proceed with a site plan for additional review by the city.
Good evening.
You don't want to be out of business. You think we're not going to be out of business?
My name is Susan Hinkley. I live at 143 Ferncrest Ave. I'm a newbie. I've only been here 15 years.[1722.58][1722.58][laughter] But I do feel a kindred spirit with everyone here. And I did not come here to speak tonight, but I first wanted to point out, sir, thank you, Mr. Bolton, for coming here and being paid to speak here. You did a very good job. You work for the company that my grandfather started, Frank Hinkley. And I can assure you that my grandfather, as well as my father, his wife, all of our Rhode Island family are very strong believers in preserving the spirit of a neighborhood. The home I grew up in was built in 1792, and it exists today. I just wanted to thank everyone here who is not paid to be here, who has come here out of a personal movement of how their lifestyle will be affected, how our children's life will be affected, how our neighborhood will be affected. And we really want to stress the importance that you represent here for us, our lifestyle, and appreciate that you will reject this proposal. Thank you.[1789.04][1789.04][applause]
My name is Nancy Costello. I live at 660 Park Avenue. I've lived in Cranston for around 30 years. So what does that mean? We let corporate America rule us again, as always, and the small businesses go out of business because of competition?
I live at 183 Park Ave in Cranston. It's four doors down from where the proposed Cumberland Farms would be. I know you've already heard a lot of comments about the traffic and how it wouldn't work for the neighborhood and I know you've heard a lot of things over and over again, but I'd like to ask you to think that if you were in this neighborhood, that you didn't want this, to please consider voting no. Because I've seen a lot of you, your eyes are glazing over, it's a long Monday, and I've seen you sending texts, and I know your job is really hard, but we're coming here and I've never seen so many people excited to do something and change something and come out to a city hall meeting on a Monday night. Nobody's paid to be here. We're really excited about this. We don't want this to happen. And I'd really appreciate it if you vote in the manner of the people. Thank you.
I'm Laurie Marshall. I live in Beechmont Avenue and I wasn't going to speak. I was just here to, to be here because I'm not going to go through the whole spiel because everything that has been said is, is fact and true. I just wanted to add something more, and that being that also with traffic that will happen more so, it is also the fact that the side streets, like there, right along there, we have Beechmont Avenue where I live, which runs through Roger Williams Park, and we also have Little League ballparks there, okay? And we do get a lot of traffic now as it is. We try to slow the traffic down because of the children and crossing the streets and everything, and that's impossible as it is right now. So here we go, if this happens, which is going to bring more traffic to cut down the street, because they're not going to want to wait all the traffic that keeps coming as it is, and they do go down pretty fast, and I'm, you know, I know it's, it's not going to, it's not going to get any better. It's, it's really going to be sad, but that's all I'm going to say right now. I hope you don't vote for this. This is not the way to go, not. Thank you.
Mr. Council President, members of the Cranston City Council, my name is Mike Sebey and I'm from 95 Massachusetts Street in Cranston. I was a former councilman for 10 years on this council. And one of the reasons why we didn't renew Miami Diner was because of the traffic problem on Warwick Avenue and Park Avenue. And that was the reason why it was never rebuilt. This council saw fit then that this wasn't the type of business to go there anymore because that used to be really chaotic and I think, Mr. Council President, you knew about the Miami Diner and many of you did. You know, when, this council is not here because Park Avenue LLC wants to make a big profit. That's not our job to make sure that they make a big profit because of Cumberland Farms wanting to come in. You know, the lawyer from Hinkley Allen stated it hasn't been rented since 2003. Why? Because the owners never put any money into this to make it a better place. The traffic is going to be horrendous, but it's not the job of the Cranston City Council to make anybody a rich person. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public like to speak? Any targeted item?
Maureen Sullivan, 62 Tucker Avenue. I own a four unit, been paying taxes for 12 years now, and I just want to state that I'm against Cumberland Farms, I support small business, and I do not believe this supports the community.
My name is Don Wells, 152 Columbia Avenue. I didn't intend to speak, but I drove past Cumberland Farms in both Cranston and Warwick on my way here. That convinced me that I needed to speak. I understand the economics. Money is cheap. They can build what they want very efficiently. But what, if you look at the size, it does not fit the neighborhood. I am also on the other side. For 35 years, I've driven past that intersection. For 35 years, I've wished, why do we have billboards in the city of Edgewood? Why do we have the same store over and over? And Mr. Bolton comments that it was 12, 12 years ago? I suspect that's when Mr. Abbey died. Why is the sign still there? If the owner wants to do something with the building, he ought to make it welcoming to somebody who wants to start a business, not put off anybody who had an idea. I suggest that perhaps there is a solution that if Mr. Bolton and developers work with the owner and the city and the neighborhood, there is a way to revitalize that property, get the economic benefits for the city, and get something that the neighborhood could use. Thank you.
I live at 283 Magnolia Street. And I'm just here because of the character of Cumberland Farms. You went back 12 years. I remember in the 60s when numerous people were questioned and told they would be charged for extorting money from stores. And Cumberland Farms played a huge amount. It was akin to racketeering in the 60s. Remember that? They were all 16-year-olds. You don't go back that far. You only go back 12 years. Oh, okay. Well, I, my brother-in-law was sat down, everyone was asked to sign the same confession. Cumberland Farms gave away a number of millions of dollars. Then the next time was when Cumberland Farms was adding alcohol to gasoline. That was the next time they were brought before the public eye. Then they went under with Chapter 11, then they came back, reorganized. So if you add in character to these people's neighborhood, I actually live a little further away, Cumberland Farms has no character in my mind.
Hello, my name is Pat Rodriguez and I live at 83 Grant Avenue in Cranston. The reason I'm here this evening is to oppose the Cumberland Farms, for all the reasons that everybody has already gotten up here and stated. Main reason, safety to our children, community, the residents, but also to all the small businesses in the area and in the plaza. I just wanted to let you know that the reason why there are one of the vacancies in the plaza was because of, one of them was my husband, Luis Rodriguez. Luis, introduce him.
Her husband, I'm going to speak. I know I spoke once before. Her husband owned Luis's barber shop.
Denise Marcinco.
He was there for over 30 years. He was one of the, oh, 12 years, well, he wanted to get, he's been in the business for over 30 years. He cut hair, he knows so many of the young kids in the neighborhood, everybody supported him. He passed away in his barber shop. That was his livelihood. He supported a teenage son, his wife, and a 10-year-old boy. Please, let us get something else in there. Go ahead, Pat.
September 19th, 2014, like every morning, I would bring my teenage son to Cranston East and then my 10-year-old and I would stop and his dad would fix his hair for school. That morning, I tried calling by the phone, there was no answer. Then in the craziness of, the kid's ready for school in the morning, I thought maybe he was with a customer, maybe in the bathroom. On the way back from dropping my son off at Cranston East, like every morning between 7:30 and 8:00 AM, my little boy and I stopped. The doors were locked, the TV was on, the lights were on. By the time we got the landlord to open the door and the police, he was in the back in his little kitchen where nobody could see him for help and he was already gone. He died of a massive heart attack unexpectedly. He had no heart condition that we knew of. And two or three weeks before that, he had come home and he had told me that he had heard from one of his customers or knew someone, that the whole corner was going to be torn down to make way for Cumberland Farms. And he was worried about it. And to think he went so fast and knowing that this could have added to the stress of it, I just, I can't get by that. Speaking of the phone, I wanted to say, please, vote against this, please.
My name is Hope Pilkington. I live at 12 Selkirk Road in Cranston. The newspaper calls in the real estate ad that Edgewood, desirable Edgewood. The Rhode Island Monthly said, "We are one of the five best neighborhoods in the state." We have associations, we have gardens, we have garden clubs, we have all sorts of amenities, there are good schools. Because one corner is supposed to be so-called blighted, this lovely neighborhood has to change. You have to put something in that will change the quality of the lives of the people in that neighborhood. It's like throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I, I was going to East Greenwich the other day and I came through Apennard and I saw this building under construction and I thought, "Oh, a bank." No, no, it wasn't a bank. It was Cumberland Farms. Great big building. But in Apennard, it was across the street from another large building, Walgreens. Okay. It's not a walking neighborhood. Not like Edgewood. It has no schools around there like Edgewood. You think about gas stations. I drove down Post Road and I didn't even hit a gas station or go by a gas station until I was almost in East Greenwich. So there's no gas stations near it. But what it did have, and it was very interesting, I thought, lots of road construction. The city of Warwick is going to change the traffic patterns and make things easier for the people who live there. But Warwick, but Cranston isn't. Cranston's going to do nothing for the roads. So you see, we'll get a new gas station, which we don't need. It will be a problem to all the walkers and the children, any adults who walk, any seniors that walk. But what would be the good of it? It won't help the neighborhood. Edgewood is special. We all know it. It is desirable. What are you thinking of? Why would you change something for the worse, not for the better? Please consider this and vote no.
My name's David Morse. I live on Mayflower Drive and I'm a lifelong resident of Edgewood. I didn't plan to say anything tonight, but I just want to make sure you know that I lend my support to the anti-Cumberland Farms train of thought. I don't think any of us want to have a 24-hour store there, kids coming in from Washington Park, more graffiti, degradation of the neighborhood as a whole. We've been here for now about 90 minutes almost. We've had about 23, 24 people speak and comment. Of those 23 or 24 people, maybe one or two are pro-Cumberland Farms, 20 or so more anti-Cumberland Farms. Democracy is supposed to be reflected at the local level, so it seems that there's a clear idea here that the community is against the Cumberland Farms proposal and we would expect that you as our representatives will vote accordingly. Thank you.
My name is Beth Lawrence. I live at 10 Linden Road, which is the third street down on Park Avenue going towards Park View. My mother lives on Shaw Avenue and has for over 50 years. The neighborhood has changed a lot. A lot of trees have grown, gotten bigger and died in that neighborhood. A lot of people that were just incredibly, had a lot of forethought into the neighborhood have gotten old and passed away. And I just want to let you know that the buildings that are there, because you, you said that you didn't think that it was right that we were protecting other buildings, we're protecting our community. The businesses that were there were there because people that built those buildings and the businesses came in and the father went to the son and there's a lot of businesses that have been there for a long, long time. The other thing that I'd like to say is you were talking about that there's not going to be any new traffic because of the, because of the Cumberland Farms. The Cumberland Farms proposed is so huge. We're not worried about the traffic, we're worried about the direction that the cars will take. The in and out on Park Avenue, the in and out on Warwick Avenue. When you cross from Park Avenue going towards Park View, you don't even go on a corner, you go on an island. Then you have to go over another little street because it's, there's a street right in front of the convenience store that's there. And the safety issue is tremendous. The kids that go to Chester Barrows are elementary school children. They're not teenagers. They're not even, they're not even 10 years old yet. There's a lot of kids that go to that school and also go to the playgrounds and use, we see in Carberry Fields. And then there's the kids that go the other direction that go to Fay, Little Fay, and that also go to Road School, to Edgeham Highland. This community is a community where the people like to be with one another. And I think that you can see how emotional everyone has gotten about our community, how strongly we feel, that we'd be able to know that we're allowed to keep our small buildings, our small businesses, and the people that help us from time to time that fulfill our needs too. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public like to speak? Any targeted item? You only can speak once. Anybody hasn't spoken? All right. We now close the public hearing section of this council meeting. We'll move on to resolutions. Are there any...
Are there any documented resolutions this evening?
None.
None? Ordinance and amendment to the comprehensive plan of 2010, Cumberland Farms intersection of Park and Warwick Avenue, petition filed by Park Associates LLC. That was denied in committee. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Councilman Bots. Is there a second in the motion? Motion made in second to approve, under discussion. Councilman Bots.
Thank you, Council President. First, my condolences to Mrs. Rodriguez for your husband passing away. I've listened, believe me, I've listened to all your arguments tonight, and I would like to start off by saying, I lived in Edgewood from '95 to '99, and I remember this piece of property probably being in the same state it is now. Whether, I don't know if it was the same businesses, but the billboards were there. I remember some sort of church being there at one point, maybe there was a tattoo parlor. Well, there was a florist, too, but I do recall various businesses going through there. I drove by the other day and I took a look, because I see, I read the report that Mrs. or Ms. Rubine sent regarding it, and aesthetics was one of the main themes of that report. And I took a drive by, and the first thing, and I shall preface this by saying, I go to Edgewood quite a bit, I enjoy the same things you do as far as, you know, going to Revolution or Basta or the various eateries down there. But the first thing, when you drive by and you really take a look, the first thing I noticed is there was the consignment store that has graffiti on the front of it. How long it's been there, I don't know, but there's graffiti on that building. Then you take a left on Warwick Ave, and the property abutting, the Abbey's TV that's still there, I noticed had five mattresses stacked in the yard. I believe there was a car on blocks under some sort of makeshift garage and other various items strewn about the yard. I also looked at the driveway that leads into the back of that property where the Abbey TV is. And I know crime was mentioned about, you know, Cumberland Farms attracting crime in. And I noticed how narrow that driveway is. And I noticed when you go back there, there's a, it's almost like an enclosed area, a garage back there, and I suspect at night, there's probably not a lot of lighting back there. And again, you know, that also could be a magnet for crime. I saw, I heard another issue, rats. Again, that house abutting the property with all that stuff strewn about the yard with mattresses and whatnot, I can't imagine what else is out there. I can only drive by and take a quick look. That is definitely something that would attract rats. Well, I can only go on by what I saw.
Please do not interrupt me speaking.
You know, there's also a pizza place, I know, that's in the two-level structure. I mean, I'm sure they have a dumpster that throws food out there. That could also be an issue for rats as well. Please. I listened to everyone speak. I did. I did. I have a list of everything that people said.
Anybody who interrupts a council person when they're speaking, I have removed. I'm not playing games here. Everybody had an opportunity to speak for four minutes. Nobody was interrupted, and when they were, I told them not to interrupt. He has that same opportunity. Whether you like what he's saying or not, you listen. If you can't listen, leave. That simple.
So again, I won't beat a dead horse, but you know, again, any business that goes in there, whether it's, you know, like someone said a Starbucks, someone mentioned a Starbucks, someone said the Miami restaurant. Anything that generates food also has the potential to generate, attract rats. I heard other things such as we're putting small businesses out of business. Again, this is, this is a zoning issue. And again, I think Attorney Bolton mentioned that we cannot, that's something that really can't be taken into consideration when you're considering zoning. And again, I mean, we do live in America, we do live where we, businesses were founded, we allow competition for businesses, laissez-faire, it was always taught in school. Again, you know, there is an aspect to competition that could help bring up the neighborhood with Cumberland Farms coming in. You laugh, but that's true. Because what I see now is an eyesore, and it's been an eyesore for 20 years, and nothing has been proposed for this property until now. So that's what I see. A couple other items, I heard you don't want to attract that element coming into the, you know, again, you're going to have Cumberland Farms, and personally, I have one in my ward. I have it at Park and Reservoir, which was a squat brick building, and it looked ugly. And then they came in and renovated it, and you know what? I drive by and I, and it's aesthetically pleasing. We have kids walking to Cranston, and again, Edgewood is not unique to the fact that kids have to walk to playgrounds, or kids have to walk to school. In Ward Two, we have Cranston East, we have kids walking on Park Avenue. Again, there hasn't been any incident yet with the Cumberland Farms there. There could be, but there could be an incident anywhere. And I think what the bottom line is, change is scary. It is. The three years I've been on this council, we've had numerous and contentious zoning issues that have come up, whether it was the land abutting the ice rink. Again, I was, before I was on the council, I came to this council because there was a Wendy's being proposed on Reservoir Ave. And I argued against that because it was abutting a property behind it. But since then, I've seen what the Wendy's did. They had to go through that process of going through the planning review board. And you know what? It's been successful, and the neighbors have not complained once to me since that has gone in. Again, you can shake your head all you want, but I'm telling the truth. Again, I know someone mentioned that most of the people here tonight spoke against, but I did receive plenty of emails, and I would say it was probably 50/50 for and against. Now, whether those people could make it tonight, I don't know. Maybe those few people are here in the room, and it's scary talking against an onslaught of people, I don't know. But I'm just telling you, I've had 50/50 in favor and against. Other items mentioned, out of scale. I mean, you do have a Shores and a Stop and Shop a quarter mile to the south of the property. You do have a CVS a quarter mile to the north. And this is our Warwick Avenue. This isn't Broad Street, which I would consider the main hub of Edgewood. Again, so I don't think it's something that's out of scale. Park Avenue, you could go anywhere in Cranston, and you know what? It is congested. You go to Knightsville on a Friday night, Park Avenue is congested. But you know what? It's an economic engine for the city of Cranston. All those restaurants down there generate tax revenue that helps to keep our property taxes lower. And it's not just property taxes. It's tangible taxes, sales tax, everything else. So you can't just consider property taxes when evaluating this property. And finally, you know, the one word I've heard, or a phrase I've heard a few times tonight was "used to be." Well, there used to be this here, and it used to be that here, and it used to be this... Yes, I mean, we can get nostalgic. I mean, you know, I, this business used to be here, and I used to love it. I used to love Leachmere. I used to love that store. I worked there. And I used to love the thing, but you know what? It's not there anymore. Because things evolve. And you know what? Again, it could be scary that Cumberland Farms is coming in. You know what? The Cumberland and Cumberland Farms was because they started their business in Cumberland, Rhode Island. And from what I understand, they moved out of Rhode Island in the 60s because General Assembly imposed some sort of tax on their milk. And they said, all right, we're moving out of state because, you know what? We don't want to pay that. We drove them, what was a Rhode Island company, out of here because we were imposing this tax on them. And now what we're doing again is we're being, imposing, I guess, what we're not, or we're fighting against having them come in. And what I would say is revitalized a piece of property that's been down on its luck for a long, long time. And I'll be voting in favor of this.
Under discussion, anybody else from the city council?
Anyone else want to...
Councilman Aketo.
Thank you, President Lanny. Yeah, just have some general comments on some of the testimony that was made. And this council does not want to discourage business. I think every member here wants to promote economic activity and business in the city of Cranston. However, it's just a public outcry as to the magnitude of this project. This is, this is, as someone said, a mega unit, a Godzilla that doesn't belong in Edgewood. And we have listened to numerous testimony against this Cumberland Farms. And I just jotted down a few issues that I think are pertinent to this problem. We heard elementary school issue and children that walked elementary school. We heard the fire station and how traffic congestion could delay a rescue or a firetruck. We heard that it's a 24-hour Cumberland Farms, which would draw maybe undesirable elements to that part of the neighborhood. So there are certain issues to either table or deny this project. But one argument that Mr. Bolton made was he talked about free competition. He talked about how protectionism isn't part of America or American free competitive market. And there's not many businesses that are not encouraged to the city, through the mayor's office, through the direct administration, through Larry DeBona, who don't receive tax breaks, don't have enterprise zones. I mean, we have numerous businesses here that we entice with protectionism. So I think that argument really doesn't hold much weight or water. But the main reason I think I'm voting against this is because Edgewood, Edgewood is a very unique part of the city. It's historic. There's a tremendous amount of beauty to that part of the community and to the city. And we need something there that fits in the general neighborhood and that the neighbors want. And I hope that the management of Cumberland Farms, the owners, and the neighborhood could reach some type of compromise. And hopefully, if we scale down this project, we don't know what the future has in store, but as it is right now, I will not be supporting this project. Thank you.
Anybody else from the council? Councilman Vivekio.
Thank you, Council President. This is a really difficult one because I understand what the neighbors are saying. I also understand what Mr. Bolton is saying. And this has an eerie similarity to the lodges project that came up. And that was, that was really a much larger development. So, you know, it really was a different animal. But what I'm concerned about is that, you know, we've got an awful lot of activism here, and that's wonderful. But it seems to me that you have 30,000 cars a day going by that intersection. We really haven't seen a lot of people come before us screaming and yelling about the traffic problems. I mean, it seems like the traffic problems exist, but the scapegoat is when a development project comes in, let's attack that development project. But we're really not attacking the real problem because, you know, 500 cars a day divided by 30,000, I mean, you're talking about less than 1%. I mean, the increase in cars, I don't think is, is the major concern. Whether the, the tanks in the ground are going to cause a problem, I mean, they're regulated so heavily right now by the, by the state of Rhode Island and the D E M. You, you know, they're probably the most, the cleanest operations going. And even, you know, the private operators that are across the street, they understand that they're bound by some serious rules and regulations. You know, I wish I had some protection against competition myself. I mean, none of us in the private industry have that protection that if someone wants to put an office right next to someone with a professional service, I can't stop them. No one can stop. Walgreens goes across from CVS all around the country. I mean, they do it, they try to kill their competition. We do have some programs available if businesses want to expand to try to compete that might help some of the small businesses to compete with the bigger companies. We do have those tax incentives on, you know, increasing the size of your gas station or food mart. So, and I really, I understand the passion of the neighborhood, but this is, this is 2015, it's not 1915. I mean, the expert from Warwick mentioned that, you know, this character, this is, this was a residential neighborhood for hundreds of years. Well, it may have been. Right now, it's a very busy intersection, and there are two state roads, I believe. I don't even think these are owned by the city. These are state roads. We don't even have the right to change those. Seems to me that there should be a movement underfoot to do some more work at the state level to fix this traffic issue because I don't think, it was, certainly wasn't caused by Cumberland Farms, and it certainly won't be, I don't think that's the solution. It's not going to change what's going on presently. So you have, you have two competing points of view. Frankly, I think it's a scary thought that kids are walking to school by that, on that intersection where there's 30,000 cars driving by every day. And if the building, it were developed, that's existing there, I think that there would be a tremendous amount of more, more traffic. Say, in a medical emergency room, for example, would generate a ton of traffic in and out of that building. So I, I think some of the arguments are just driven by, maybe by emotion. I wish someone else could, would have come forward with millions of dollars to maybe change the, that and make it something more historic. But I don't think, I think we'd be fooling ourselves if we thought someone's going to come up with $2 million to develop that, that property and make it a, you know, an office building, a five-unit office building. It's not going to happen. There's no, there's not, not enough parking there actually for that kind of structure. I had hoped, like Councilman Aketo, that maybe the applicant and the neighborhood had a little more time to work out some ideas with regard to that change of the structure that one of the speakers had mentioned at the last hearing. And I guess that, that must have not happened, or it's not in the cards. But I thought that was a good, a good thing. But I think that this, this building is, this corner is not going to get any better. And I'm not sure if anyone's going to come up with the kind of money needed to make this a nice location unless, you know, there's another company out there in the wings that could develop this. Thank you.
Councilman Freina.
Thank you, Council President Lanny. You know, I look at this development and the testimony that was made both in the committee meetings and tonight, and I think about some of the things that were said that, you know, as councilpeople were pressured from developers or residents. I will tell you, I probably got an equal amount of emails, people for, people against, reasons why they were for, reasons why they were against. I've listened to testimony of there would be gang shootings because of the Cumberland Farms. I, you know, some of it has been outlandish, to be honest with you. Some of it has been valid, that there may be more traffic. We've heard from traffic experts that say there won't be. But I look at what's there. I look at these buildings, and I just see a problem. I see buildings that are old, that have not been developed since 2002. You know, a lot of people said we should try to find another business to go there. Well, the city council doesn't look for businesses to put in different spots of the city. We assess the things that come before us, and we weigh them on their merits. We look at the positives, the negatives, the pros and the cons. There are some pros to developing this site. And there are a couple of cons, too. I tend to agree with Councilman Vivekio. I would have liked to have seen this project continued for another month to see if we could have gotten Edgewood and Cumberland Farms and the developers in a room to try to discuss what some of these issues are, if size was scaled back, if entrances and exits were moved, if there was some common ground we could come to. But to echo what Councilman Vivekio said, I've lived in Cranston 37 years, all my life. I've had the pleasure of living in many different neighborhoods, walking neighborhoods, driving neighborhoods. I've lived in a two-family, in a three-family, in a one-bedroom apartment with my dad. I've lived everywhere. And change is scary. And I know how scary it can be. You know, I've had to move jobs, I've lost a job. Competition is tough. I've worked for companies that downsize. It's difficult. But to have a place that is literally sitting vacant, that is rundown, that would take millions of dollars to offset, we have a proposal before us. To deny it and not try to come to some common ground, I think is... To deny it and not try to come to some common ground, I think, is the wrong move. I think working together, we could figure out a plan to move forward. Because you might not like what comes down the road. I looked at Councilman Nocido's ward, where the lodges at Phoenix Glen was going to go. We were lucky that they decided to build something that conformed with what ward forewanted. We don't know what's coming down the pike for that area. No one's renting it. It's a fire hazard. I have to imagine it's probably infested with rats. These are problems we have to solve. And to just deny it and move forward without having a solution, I don't think is the right move.
Anybody else in the council? Like to speak on? Our Councilman, Steikos.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight. I don't think there has been as many people in the council chamber in probably two or three years. I'd like to correct a couple of things that have been said. The first is about the traffic problem. We have been working on the traffic problem on Warwick Avenue with the cooperation of the mayor's office. The Warwick Avenue was changed from primarily a four-lane street to a two-lane street. And that was with the state DOT. And we have a commitment for the same thing to happen on Norwood Avenue that empties into Warwick Avenue. So there is an effort to slow the traffic down because of the fatalities that have happened on that street of pedestrians. The second thing I'd like to correct is the impression that Mr. Bolton made that somehow there's a motion, a ordinance on the docket to stop Cumberland Farms or to protect existing businesses. And that's not what's on the agenda tonight. What's on the agenda is a request by Cumberland Farms to change the law in order to construct a massive gas station where the comprehensive plan says there should be nothing that massive and where it says there should be nothing, and the zoning says that that's not permitted. So what we're being asked to do tonight is to change the law in order to open the gates so that Cumberland Farms can, I think, run people out of business and damage the Edgewood neighborhood. This project is simply too large. It is huge. It takes two residential homes in order to squeeze it into the site. And it will damage the mixed use that we have in our comprehensive plan for this neighborhood, which is a few units of housing, a couple businesses, a few units of housing, a mix. And that's, does that kind of setup encourages walking? It encourages, it slows down traffic. I can say categorically that I do not want Reservoir Avenue on Warwick Avenue. And that's what this is about, in addition to the massive size of that project. Because then we're going to have other massive projects, and before we know it, there's going to be wall-to-wall traffic and wall-to-wall ugliness. So I would urge the council to listen to the neighborhood. We have something here that's valuable in our city, and to damage that for a gas station is just absurd. And to call a gas station economic development is, I mean, how low are we going to go?
Anybody else from the council? Chairman Arquette.
I can speak twice, right, Council President?
As chairman, you can.
I just have to really share to Mr. Coop. Mr. Coop, what's the administration's position on this Cumberland Farms mega unit? It's a for or against. I mean, it's either for or against, right? That's what I'm hoping to hear.
Mr. President, I spoke at the ordinance committee meeting, and I'll say it again. The administration does consider this economic development. Redeveloping a parcel that is unoccupied, that would, although I do not have a figure because we haven't seen an actual plan, I cannot tell you what the increase in tax revenue would be. We estimate that it would be significant. There would be ongoing revenue from sales tax, potentially, depending on the products that are sold. There would be additional tax from prepared foods that might be sold. And obviously, there are very strong objections, as have been pointed out. Many of them are very emotional. We've heard experts talk about whether or not there would be a traffic impact or not a traffic impact. I can tell you, the mayor's office has received communication, both for and against. But in balance, this seems like the right kind of economic development that we need for this city, and the administration would support this proposal.
So that's a for? Okay. One other question. I understand that the planning commission did approve this, not through the chair to direct administration? The planning commission approved this, is that correct?
No.
No? And what was the vote on the planning commission?
Councilman, the vote, I believe, was four to three, because I'm on the commission.
So it was a very close vote?
But it needed five votes to sustain yes or no.
So there were four in favor and three against? Is that correct?
No, there was four against and three for.
Okay.
But you need five, either for or against.
All right, thank you. And just my last, who were the three in the ayes? What members voted in the affirmative?
Let's see. It was myself.
As director of finance in the administration?
Director of finance.
Okay.
It was Ken Mason.
Who's the chief of the public works.
Correct. And there was a gentleman who was the planning director of East Providence.
Okay. But so two members of this administration who were on the planning board voted in favor of this.
That is correct.
All right. Thank you for that clarity. So I just wanted to clarify to the public that the administration is on board with this project. And, you know, by me voting against, I don't think I'll get a street paved or the street sweeping my ward or potholes filled. So I want you to know the risk I'm taking by voting against this project. Thank you.
Councilman Buck, you have a few more words?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Director Strom. Director, do we receive some good news recently about the finances of the city and the bonding agencies?
Yes, we've been upgraded by all three rating agencies.
And usually, when you get an upgrade, that means the city's in pretty good shape. It's being run in a fiscally sound manner. We're doing things pretty good to get the city moving forward.
Yeah, financially, they're doing very well.
This Jermaine to the subject?
Where was the Jermaine? Comments about not getting roads paved? How does that have to get with Cumberland Farms?
If we're going to have a big discussion on the merits of the mayor and the demerits of the mayor, we've spent here all night since we're opposite parties. But I think all these people here want to know what we're going to do on this particular ordinance. Anybody else?
I just had a question. Just a quick question, Council.
A quick question?
Yes. Through the chair to the, I don't know if the solicitors here, but this is, this is a zoning, this is a zone change to conform to the comprehensive plan? Is that...
It's a zone change. I'll let him say it. Councilman Santa Maria?
Council President, just to, we have two votes tonight. We have one for the comprehensive plan and one for the zoning change. We have two votes.
The first one.
To answer your questions, part of the parcel complies with the comprehensive plan and part does not. So he needs the, Cumberland Farm needs the change to accomplish the entire project.
And one other quick question. So even if it were to go through, they would still have a number of hurdles to go through?
Yes. It would be still subject to site plan review and all of the normal conditions of planning that accompany any development the size.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Steikos.
I just want to make clear to everybody from the public that the development plan review process is a, for those who went through it with the CVS, know that it's a process that is separate from the city council. This is the one time the city council has to vote on this project. We don't vote on a zoning change, on a zoning variance, and we don't vote on the, we're not part of the development plan review process, which is a, will not decide whether or not there's a project. It will essentially tinker around the edges of the project with the fire chief and the head of building inspections and the director of planning. So the key decision is going to be made right now.
Anybody else on the council? Nice, I'll say my last word since nobody else wants to speak. I'm very concerned about the traffic problems. Park Avenue is a two-lane highway, and I compare it with the Cumberland Farms on Park Avenue and Reservoir. Park and Reservoir, Park Avenue is a three-lane highway. Reservoir Avenue, going northbound with a left turn onto Park Avenue, is actually a five-lane highway, three-lane highway, sorry. Park Avenue is backed up from, at 3:00 in the afternoon, when Parkview gets out, and Route 10, and all those commuters come off Route 10 to Park Avenue, going towards Edgewood, it's bumper-to-bumper all the way to Warwick Avenue. This situation will not make it any better. No paid expert is going to tell me, this is wonderful, it'll work. Not unless I pay the expert to say it for me. Also, it doesn't conform with the neighborhood. The biggest problems we have in Cranston is where you put commercial property or industrial property abutting residential neighborhoods. That's where all the problems start. That's where all the complaints that I've had in my 13 years on this council, majority of them are that kind of situation. Economic development is a wonderful thing, and we need it. Nobody on this council will say we don't need economic development. No taxpayer in this city will say we don't need economic development. But the economic development that we do need has to conform with the neighborhoods. And Cumberland Farms does not, period. Chairman Arquette, would you like to make the motion?
Oh, he made it. Motion approved and seconded.
Discussion.
We're the vote now, Council President.
Will the clerk, T., please?
Just clarify the vote. A yes vote is to approve and a no vote is to deny. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
The clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
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 Yes.
No.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Champ?
Take a five-minute break. We have another vote, Mr. Chairman.
We have another vote, the sisters.
Okay, let's take the other vote.
Okay. The ordinance committee met and did not pass 41506 ordinance amendment, chapter 17 of Code of City of Cranston, 2005, entitled zoning, Warwick and Park intersection petition filed by Park Associates LLC, Cumberland Farms. Do you entertain a motion?
Motion denied.
I'll second a motion to deny, it's before us.
Motion denied is stupid. Then you vote yes or no.
So we have a motion to deny and a second.
Motion made to deny and there's a second on that. Any discussion on that motion?
It's done now.
Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Point of information is clarification. This time, a yes vote is to deny and a no vote is to approve.
That's correct.
So it's the opposite.
A yes vote is to deny and a no vote is to approve.
Councilman Graham?
Yes.
Councilman Steikos?
Yes.
Councilman Buck?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
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 Okay, last item on the ordinance committee was 515-01 ordinance amendment, title 10, chapter 32, Code of City of Cranston, 2005, entitled motor vehicles in traffic stop horizon drive at Comstock Parkway.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Councilman Nocido.
Yes, Mr. Council President. The last few months, the Traffic Safety Commission has been meeting, and there's been some problem areas, and this seems to be one of them. And we hope that this is the first step in solving some of the traffic problems there. I urge everybody to support it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Okay, last item on the ordinance committee was 515-01 ordinance amendment, title 10, chapter 32, Code of City of Cranston, 2005, entitled motor vehicles in traffic stop horizon drive at Comstock Parkway.
Motion approved.
Yes.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Councilman Nocido.
Yes, Mr. Council President. The last few months, the Traffic Safety Commission has been meeting, and there's been some problem areas, and this seems to be one of them. And we hope that this is the first step in solving some of the traffic problems there. I urge everybody to support it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Council President?
Yes, Council.
I suggest we take a five-minute recess. If it's up to you.
We'll take a five-minute recess so everybody can calm down. Finance Committee Chairman Steikos.
Rather dull month at the Finance Committee. We have the resolution authorizing the real estate tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion been made to approve and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next is the monthly resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion approved. Second. Motion been made and seconded to approve. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Graham?
Yes.
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 Next is the tax interest waivers recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 And the final item is the administrative report to do with the, well, interest rates are being paid on bonds. This was, a request was made in connection with the refinancing, and we did not discuss it in committee because of the Cumberland Farms issue and... it in committee because of the Cumberland Farms issue, and so we continued it to the full council meeting, and hopefully Director Strom will be able to give us a report. Director Strom.
Thank you, Council. I believe at that meeting that the discussion didn't occur, I believe you did receive through the city clerk a schedule of the current bonds that we have, and which, the first two, the 2005 and 2006, these are the bonds that we, based on my discussion with our fiscal advisor, has stated that would be doable for refinancing. The current interest rate for these bonds blended is approximately 4.64%. By refinancing it, we're going to reduce that to 2.52%. That is going to save, just in fiscal year 2016, approximately, well, not approximately, actually, $383,052. Now, the new money that we're going to be bonding for, which is 8.4 million, that's going to be at a figure of 3.85%, and that's going to be, so to speak, an increase of $184,209. So the net savings for fiscal year 16 for a $30 million issuance of 8.4 and 21.8 is going to be close to $200,000 savings. Now, the State of Rhode Island and GFOA, these groups and the state consider anything over 3% is worth refinancing from a savings of the par amount. And this blended rate is, the savings is going to be 7%. So we're far above the level that makes it beneficial to the city. And the blended rate is 3.13%, which is far lower than the 4.64 that we were currently spending. So there's only, these two fiscal years were the only years that we could call the bonds and refinance. And I think, as I stated at one of the meetings, we are not extending the amortization period. We're continuing it with the number of years left. One, I believe, is six and the other's 11. So with that in mind, it, to me, it's a no-brainer that we're saving the city money, and we're also able to finance for new bonding that we need for roads and equipment and pox and rec and various things, library, that has been on the, in the schedule since the budget. So we will, in a couple of years, look at, depending on the market rates, 2008, there's a couple of bonds there, and they will be callable. The rule of thumb is that it's, it should be more than 10 years of activity before you call the bonds for any significant savings. So with that in mind, if there's any questions, feel free to ask.
Councilman Steikos.
Yeah, a couple things. The, you said that they were going to be refinanced at what rate?
The new rate currently, and you can't hold me to the exact percent because it depends on the day of the closing. But as it stands right now, it's going to be at 2.52% for the refunding.
Why, and then you said that when we go out to bonding this year?
Yes.
With new bonds, it's going to be 3.85?
Yes, because you, well, because the refunding is only for five and 11 years. The new money will be for a 20-year period. So the rates are higher. And we always bond new money at about a 20-year period of time.
Okay, so that it's a, it's a higher rate because they're projecting in the future that interest rates will be higher than they are now? So there's a longer?
Yeah, and it's also, it's less money. It's only 8.4 million, so the rates are a little higher than the refi of 21 million.
Ah, okay.
So, and it's a longer period of time.
All right. And why is it that, why is it that you would only refinance, I think you said you only refinance if, if you've paid off 10 years of the bond?
If, if the bond has been in existence for 10 years or less, it makes it more attractive to go out and refinance at these rates that are currently in place. Anything that still has 10-year or more timeframe, it doesn't make sense still. We've, we've looked at all different scenarios, and as I stated, the only two bonds were 2005 and '06 that made sense from a savings standpoint.
And that, and that's because the longer?
Right.
The longer, the higher the interest rate.
Right. And also, Councilman, in two years from now, those that, so to speak, are not eligible right now, or doesn't make, probably will be, will make sense if, unless interest rates go up.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Nocido.
Through the chair to Councilman Steikos. Councilman, a bond, when it's callable, pays a higher interest rate at the beginning, too. So because the investor's taking a risk that it could be called back, he's getting a higher interest rate upfront, too. Well, my question is to Mr. Strom. Correct my memory, in the budget that's coming up in July here, that $200,000 in debt service, did we budget for that, or is that automatically going to give us a $200,000 surplus?
No, we did. I used $200,000, and it happens to come out to 198,843.
Okay, so did we budget that?
Yes.
It's savings already?
Yes.
Okay.
For '16.
So we're not going in there with an automatic $200,000 surplus?
No, no, we're not.
Okay. So we reduce the debt service to reflect that amount?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Strom? Moving on, I guess. Chairman Favecchio, Claims Committee.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I, no, I was, I looked at it, and I said, I just would mention that we, we met and we heard about 30, over 30 claims the last meeting, and we resolved some 32 or 33 claims, and they're all on the docket there for anyone to see, but those were all resolved, and a few others went to the solicitor's office.
Okay, thank you. Public hearings. Anybody from the public like to speak on any subject? Doesn't have to be doctored. Enter on your minds, come up and yell at us. No takers. Okay, I closed the public hearings. Election of city officials. Report of city officers. Standing monthly report of cited properties in the city. Do we have a list on that? Councilman Santa Maria?
I was wondering. Spencer knows if the corner of Park and Warwick is on the cited property monthly list. It seems to be such a problem. Has it been cited at all in the last 30 years? I don't see it on this list, but I was just wondering if anyone's?
I'll be calling building inspections tomorrow for all the mattresses. I mean, I know Councilman Arqueto had a problem with five mattresses on a property, so I'll definitely be sure to be giving them a call, even though it's not my ward. I will definitely.
But you know that you don't have to get a Cumberland Farms in to clean up the property. You can just, inspections down there, correct?
Gentlemen.
Thank you.
Our executive communications report on hiring a special counsel, consultants, et cetera pursuant to Charter Section 15.05. Are there any reports in the industry?
Mr. President, members of the council should have received a report from our law department as we do each month detailing the expenses for legal counsel. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to try to address those.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. My monthly ask about legal fees, who is Darrow and Everett, and why are they charging us $305 an hour? And Penone Lopes Endeavor, I think, went up to 225 an hour.
I don't know off the top of my head. I will get back to you on that.
Okay, I just hadn't heard of them before, but.
Yeah. I think it's a pension dispute, and they have specialized knowledge in that particular area, but I will definitely check on that for you. Mr. President, I'll move on to the request to be continued in service for one year from Fire Chief William McKenna. In anticipation of reaching his 65th birthday, Chief McKenna has requested to be continued in service for one year as of July 11, 2015. A report that the administration has received information indicating that the chief is eligible to be continued in service and recommend that his request be approved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Congressman Steikos?
Yes.
Congressman Fox?
Yes.
Congressman Dargo?
Yes.
Senator Fox?
Yes.
Senator Favecchio?
Yes.
Senator Favecchio?
Yes.
Senator Favecchio?
Yes.
Mr. President, we have a request from Lieutenant Joseph Gavlick of the Cranston Fire Department in anticipation of his 55th birthday, has requested to be continued in service for one year effective as of July 13, 2015. The administration has received documentation evidencing that he's eligible, and I recommend approval of this request.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Congressman Steikos?
Yes.
Congressman Fox?
Yes.
Senator Fox?
Yes.
Senator Fox?
Yes.
Senator Favecchio?
Yes.
Senator Favecchio?
Yes.
Senator Favecchio?
Yes.
Conservation Commission of this.
Mr. President, there are three members of the Conservation Commission who are current members of the commission, whose terms are up for renewal, and those members are Bridget Graziano, to be reappointed for a term ending June 3, 2018, Douglas Doe, to be reappointed for a term ending June 3, 2018, and Carl A. Santucci, for a term ending June 3, 2018, and would request advice and consent for those reappointments.
Motion to approve. Motion made to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Under discussion? Under discussion, Councilman Nocido.
Through the chair to the clerk. On the Conservation Commission, what governs the people who are appointed? Does the mayor have all the appointments? Does the council have any appointments on that?
The mayor has all the appointments.
So the mayor has all the appointments?
Yes.
How many members are on that commission?
I'll have to check. I don't know who wants to be my assistant.
Sure, George, just, you can let, send me an email. I'm just curious. I don't remember how many members are on there and who have the appointments, that's all. Thank you. Unless, Director Coop, unless you know.
Unfortunately, I don't, but I'll work with the clerk if necessary to get you the answer.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Through the motion and second. Any other discussion concerning this?
Yeah, motion and a second, Council President.
All right. On all three or just Graziano?
Do we have to do them separately, or?
We can take them as a block if somebody meant one.
Motion to vote on as a block.
Second.
Motion made to vote on as a block. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Congressman Steikos?
Yes.
Senator Fox?
Yes.
Senator Fox?
Yes.
Senator Favecchio?
Yes.
Senator Favecchio?
Yes.
Senator Favecchio?
Yes.
Motion to approve the block, second. Motion made to approve the block, and there's a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Congressman Steikos?
Yes.
Senator Fox? Yes.
Senator Fox?
Yes.
Senator Fox?
Yes.
Senator Fox?
Yes.
Through the chair.
Yes.
In response to Councilman Nocido's question, that board is made up of seven members, all appointed by the mayors with the advice and consent of the council.
Can I follow up question, Mr. President? Is that by charter or by just an ordinance?
That's in the city code, not the charter.
Councilman Santa Maria. Council President, while we're on the subject of commissions, could I ask the administration a quick question or concern?
Free, all free.
I got a call from Chris Cole, the chairman, that the mayor still has an appointment, his appointment on the zoning board resigned or didn't re-up. So I was just wondering if, she's been having trouble getting a quorum the last couple of months, and she said the mayor still hasn't made an appointment, so just asking if he has one available or something.
He doesn't have any appointments available. I spoke to Chris Cole two weeks ago, told her that we had an appointment. It's the mayor's third alternate, and it was Mark Capuano.
Okay, so that, so she's all set then?
She is.
Good. Thank you, Council President.
Any other discussion? Moving on, Council President, Communications. Well, like most of you, I got my mail today, and I got my tax bill. And before I got that, other people got their mail, and they called me on their tax bills. It seems that the month and the day was right, but the year was wrong. Instead of saying July 2015, it said 14, and they wanted to know if they should pay their bills or not. Well, when I saw I was a victim of the same problem, I called Mr. Barone, because he seems to know what's going on. And he told me that it was a typo. So everybody who owns property in this city got a typo. A $260 million budget with a typo on the most important document anybody who has a car or a piece of property in this city gets. Well, they're going to correct the typo, but they can't sign out new bills because it's very costly and they won't get their taxes on time. So what they're going to do is they're going to advertise in the paper that they goofed. There was a typo. And I find that very interesting, for such a well-run city, that we did something that maybe a place like Barrowville would do. I just can't believe with the computer expertise that, and printing thousands and thousands of bills, nobody saw 14 instead of 15?
I didn't see it.
Or 15 instead, 15 instead of 16. Boggles my mind. But that's an argument for another day. Move on to council member communications, because I don't want to prolong this. Councilman Steikos.
Yes, we don't need to talk about the tax letter. I think that's done. I did have two brief issues. One is that, I've forgotten his name, the Clean Cities Coordinator?
Yes.
Joe?
DeCarlo.
Joe DeCarlo. He offered, has, well, asked me to offer to everyone a tour of Rhode Island Resource Recovery, their, their building. And he can, if there's a group of us that wants to do that, they'll give us a special VIP tour. So if anyone's interested in that, let me know. And the next item is an issue for Mr. Barone, which I don't really expect an answer for because I don't think I wrote you about it, but I would like it on next month's agenda because it just doesn't seem to get solved. And that is that the.
And that is that the property at 176 Patuxent Avenue has scaffolding up and has had scaffolding up for years and years. And a couple of years ago, I, the building, I made a complaint, and the building inspector somehow addressed it, but the scaffolding is still up there. And I just wonder if, is that, do we need a city ordinance that says you can't put up scaffolding for more than five years? Or, so I would just, if you're not able to answer tonight, that's fine, but I'd like some direction.
So is that your question? Do we need an ordinance?
My direction is how do we get that addressed?
Okay. I did email you back. I reached out to Building Inspection, and they're going to go out and visit the owner of the property.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
They didn't give me anything back yet. They said they were going to go out and do a site visit.
All right. Could you just follow up?
Absolutely.
See what their, the result of their site visit is?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's it for me.
Counselor Jari Leeder Aketo.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, I see the item for the street sweeper, but I have several other items if the council beg their indulgence, because they only came to light to me on Friday, and I didn't have enough time to get them in communication, so I'm going to ask for an indulgence here for the council. But the first is, is there a schedule where the street sweepers were and where they're going to be? We have any indication about that?
Mr. President, I do have information from the superintendent of our Highway Division. Generally speaking, the sweepers have completed all of the main roads in the city and have gone back and done quite a few of the side roads. And they report by districts. They have completed districts 1, 2, 3, 4, 14, 15, and 16. They reported that last week, and then this week, they've started working on District 5 and District 13. I can give you a general idea of what those districts cover. District 1 through.
That's fine, unless the council wants it, but if we could just get in.
I'd like to know.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Just for reference, those are the snowplow districts as well, if that helps. But District 1 through 4 is everything from Edgewood to Reservoir Avenue. Districts 14, 15, and 16 are everything from Seven Mile Road to 295. District 5 is Garden City, and District 13 is the Westwood area. I did bring the district maps with me, if anyone would like to look at the maps.
So thank you very much in that indication. So now, one area was Ward 3, so I'm, should be expecting the street sweeper by July or August. Am I correct?
The expectation, as it is every year, is that all of the side streets are done by August 1, and then they go back and do the main streets again.
Okay. Thank you for that. Very informative.
You're welcome.
Director Coop.
I take your mind.
Thank you. Next, I have, this is for Mr. Barone, and this is just a reiteration of, we spoke today on the phone, but I have two large potholes, one at the corner of Oxford Street and Princess that you have. This one just came to me at 4 o'clock. The other one is Elwin Street and Princess Ave. So that's a new one, Jeff. Elwin and Princess Ave, two large potholes. I received a call today about Friendly Ice Cream. I don't know if that's in business or not. I don't think it's in business, but the back of Friendly's where the butts with Sheffield Road, the neighbors are complaining because they say the grass is high and the shrubs haven't been cut. So the aesthetics of that neighborhood is in question, and they're looking to someone to clean that up. That's behind Friendly's on Reservoir. I mentioned this, 632 Dyre Ave, Corner Dyre in Farmington, which is a rental, unit three-decker. The tenant there is operating a business. He's got construction trucks and cement and bricks, and they keep on adding up, so the neighbors are inquiring about 632 Dyre Ave. I have 188 Farmington Ave, two dirty mattresses in the backyard. They've been there maybe several weeks. It rained. There's a strange odor coming out of the backyard there. You might want to send an inspector to 188 Farmington Ave. And I think that covers everything, Jeff. Thank you.
Counselman Osito, Counselor Papalakis, and then Counselman San Maria. Director Coop? I mean, while I think it's great that, well, I think it's great that it will be done by August, but for planning purposes or anything, next year is, we only have two machines operating, is that correct, on street sweeping?
No.
Yes, we do have two, although Director Barone told me that one of the operators called in sick today, so, but we'll get somebody on tomorrow.
All right. So from an operational standpoint, then, is it because we only have limited amount of personnel trained to run it or to expedite this? Can we kind of look at maybe leasing some street sweepers and then maybe next year purchasing some? I personally think, as every other council person here, that I would say past Memorial Day, nobody should be street sweeping sand anymore. I mean, I don't know if that's too high an expectation, and I know this year was an abnormal year, so, but I mean, I think really from a taxpayer's standpoint, I think waiting until August is just not where we need to be. So, you know, if you want us to work, you know, whatever.
Just, I want to be clear that the main roads have been swept throughout the entire city.
I understand that.
And they're going back to work on the side roads. We have two pieces of equipment. We have two trained drivers. You know, if we were to invest the additional money to get more equipment and hire another driver, obviously we'd be able to do it faster. It's just a question of.
Well, I mean, offline, I'll come in, we can talk about that, because I think going forward, I think that's a brilliant idea. We need to have more people, because waiting until August is just, doesn't cut it in my book. I mean, I know they're working diligently with what we have, so I'm not faulting anybody. I just would like to maybe be proactive on this.
Certainly a discussion that could be undertaken. Can you drive?
I'm available too now. Councilman Kaplasakis.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. As we all know in this room, St. Mary's Feast is coming up, so there's a couple of things I'd like to go over briefly with the administration. I had a constituent reach out to me to ask me if, there's a cluster of streets where the fireworks get shot, shoot off, if they can be parking on one side of the street only. We used to do that, so that way rescue and fire can get through. Last year, we got away from that for some reason, and it was a safety issue. Don't know if there are any discussions about doing that again. I have the list of streets if you guys need them. And that is Colwell Street, Brick Street.
Sorry. Night.
So we have Colwell Street, we have Brick Street.
Night Street.
Hey, this is what I was going to do. You repeat that position.
Night Street. I believe Kingwood Avenue. Green Avenue.
One side of Phoenix.
And one side of Phoenix Avenue.
I have the names of the streets, but I don't know what you want done with them.
So one side of the street, there was parking, and on the other side, we put up temporary signs on the poles that said no parking. That way the rescues can get by or fire truck if they need it to be.
Okay, so you want no parking on one side?
One side only.
On all these streets?
If you, yeah, if possible. And then my other suggestion is, do we have extra waste bins that we can hand out, like municipal bins we see on the sidewalks? You know, we've, sitting up at Public Works that we can put out, so people that come visit the feast can throw their trash in the cans instead of throwing them on the sidewalk?
Extra bins?
Yeah, do we have any? I don't know.
Like for our inventory? Not that I know of. Every time a constituent requests additional bins, they have to order those through Waste Management. We don't have them.
Not a house bin, a bin that the municipality uses on the sidewalks near a rip the bus stop, near an intersection. Our bins.
Oh, I'd have to check with Highway or Public Works.
Yeah, or even barrels, you know?
Okay. And what would you like done with those?
Put out, so that way people that come visit the feast can throw their trash in them instead of throwing them on the ground.
Can I follow up on that, Mr. Council President? What happens is in Knightsville, on Brick Street, Night Street, Colwell Street, Green Avenue, as the people are going to the fireworks, they have all sorts of stuff that they're eating, and what the neighbors do, or 50% of the neighbors do now, is they put their own bins out there so that they don't have to go clean up after St. Mary's Day the next day. I mean, I know Public Works does, but if we could put, I mean, in the old days, they used to put those, just the regular barrels with trash.
Like the old Tippy McCan type of thing?
Right, exactly. So that way they would help the city, it would help the.
Kick in the can. I can run that by Public Works. We would just have to schedule pickup. I mean, obviously, the city would be responsible to pick it up. Waste Management would not.
And one more thing. I know we talked last week a little bit about going out and doing an extra pickup after the feast. If that's, if you can look into that and maybe make that a possibility, that would be.
Think I emailed you on that?
You did, very thorough. Thank you. But I just don't think enough people know about the new bag program yet to make it effective.
We sent out 42,000 notices about the new bag.
I know. I think with the amount of visitors, I don't think it's going to be good enough, but just a suggestion. Thank you.
Counselman San Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Quick on the bags. CVS, people tell me they went to CVS, they still don't have them. Can you check on that? I know Fred's, but CVS doesn't have them. Anyway, the last council meeting, Minority Leader Favickio and I asked about Garden Hills after the National Grid project. Only half the street was paved, and you want to get back to us on what was happening, if the whole street was getting paved or not? Because, remember correctly, we weren't getting any answers, or we weren't. Well, they, go ahead.
I did speak to Carlos about that as well. I was told that they are going to come back and do these. There's some indication that they're going to do the whole streets at some point, but it would be National Grid and not the city. Is that the?
I didn't hear that, no.
All right. You know.
If the Chief of Staff said that, then I would say that.
I would have to confirm that. The only problem is, is we don't have any guarantee from that.
So what you're saying is National Grid is going to come back and repave the entire street?
Well, that's what the suggestion was. I don't know if they've committed to it yet. I mean, I think it, I agree with Counselman San Maria, that you've got half-paved streets, some quarter-paved, and then there are some sections below, like on Mountain Laurel, where there's some real problems that developed from the winter. And so, you know, I wasn't sure which streets are on the, on the block. As a matter of fact.
Well, if you're, if you're asking what streets are going to be paved from the city this year, that list has not been available to us yet. They're still working on it. Actually, they're working on the, what they're paving now is from the 2014, 2015 paving list. The 2015, 2016 paving list has not been made available to us because it has to be reviewed with Public Works and Engineering. The streets that are in Garden Hills that you're referencing have nothing to do with the city paving project. National Grid was doing some utility work. And typically, when a utility digs up a road, they will only pave what they dig up. So if they're, if they're laying new gas pipes, and it's a five-foot dig, they're only going to repave five feet wide. Can I, can I just, if the utilities have given Carlos any inkling that they would be willing to do it, I would grasp onto it and see if they'll be willing to do it. I wouldn't just drop it. I agree with Counselman Favickio that if they. I totally agree with you. That would save the city a lot of money, because there may be streets that National Grid or Providence Boarder is working on that we are considering paving. Because they won't ask again. You know that director. If they were. I will definitely, I will definitely touch base with the Chief of Staff tomorrow, let him know about this conversation, and I'll follow up on it. And I was going to ask if they had the paving list out. Do you know when that will be coming out? I don't. It's not out. It's not available to me. Because July 1 is coming soon, so we're going to. Right, but that, what they're paving now, they're still working on the old list. So that's going to run over July 1, because 2014, 2015 paving will not be done by July 1. So when they start the new, when they start the new list, by that time, it'll be out. So, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Favickio.
Yes, well, to follow up, Council President, on Counselman San Maria, I did ask Mr. Lopez as well, because my concern was, he's, they are looking for street lists for the new, for the new session, so you can submit some streets. But my concern is that we're leaving half-streets and quarter-streets that are repaved, and then the other half is old, and it's not going to look good, and plus, there were some problems with them, so I think we should at least.
Well, I'm, I'm sure if the streets that the utilities are working on, if they're being considered to be paved, then the city will pave the entire street. If the city's not considering paving any of those streets, then unless what you said that the Chief of Staff told you that National Grid said they were going to pave the entire streets, if that doesn't happen, then it's going to stay like it is, because they typically do not pave the entire street curb to curb.
One of the, a couple, a couple of the quick things. The, the street sweeping, so are they, are they doing both sides of the city and coming toward the middle now? Is that, is that how I understand it?
From what I understand, when they did the mains, they went, I think this year was west to east. They started on the west side and they're working east.
The opposite. Started on the west.
Yep. So they'll do all the mains.
Because they haven't gotten to my area.
East to west.
East to west, I believe.
Okay. So east to west, and it'll still be the mains first, and then they'll do the side streets, dead ends, cul-de-sacs, and then they'll go back again and do the mains.
They did the mains, west to east, the main, the side streets, east to west.
Okay. So the director's telling me they did the mains, west to east, and the side streets, east to west.
Okay. And just one other thing to follow up on, Counselman Sykes had mentioned his thing with the recycling. I happened to go on the website, the city website yesterday, look at the, there are a lot of little videos about recycling, and there's some really great information on there, and I happened to run into Mr. DiCarlo, and I asked, actually asked him, and I believe he's working on making it a little more user-friendly, so you get to those little clips. I think they use some of the resource recovery data that they have, and there are some great little films, basically, or some little videos that you can watch, because it's, it really is confusing, you know, as to what can be recycled and what cannot. I think there's a lot of confusion over it. I was having trouble figuring out some of the stuff myself. And I want pizza boxes, if they're soiled, you can't put them in. If they aren't soiled, you can put them in recycling, and there's an awful lot of information on there, but I think we could.
Mr. Coop, have some, Mr. Coop, sorry. Mr. Strom, the Director of Finance, would like to clarify my remarks about the quarterly tax fiasco. As usual, it's not their fault. Anyways, continue.
Well, thank you for that strong support. I just want the council to know, yes, there was an error on the tax bills that came out, and most people received them today. It was brought to my attention. It was brought to our treasurer's attention. It was brought to the administration's attention. Back on June 1, we sent to, it's called D3, Document, it used to be Document Technology, a copy of the dates, and I have a copy right here. It says due dates are July 15, 2015, October 15, 2015, January 15, 2016, April 15, 2016. When Document printed the bills, they sent a sample to Treasury. We have to check it with the barcode to make sure it, it does, you know, scan properly, and also that the amounts were correct. The amount, the total amount is correct if you paid your. When Document printed the bills, they sent a sample to Treasury. We have to check it with the barcode to make sure it, it does, you know, scan properly and also that the amounts were correct. The amount, the total amount is correct if you paid your bill in full. The, the dates that they put on, they never changed the template from last year, so unfortunately they're showing 14, 14, 15, and 15. As I stated earlier, it should be 15, 15, 16, and 16. So with that in mind, a letter was drawn up and they will be sending out a letter at no charge to the city rather than reprinting the tax bills that could be very expensive, showing the full year payment due on July 15, the first quarter payment due on July 15, the second quarter on October 15, third on January 16, and fourth quarter on April of 16. And this is the letter. The letter is also on our website. We put it on our website today. We also, as I stated, they're going to be mailing this out this week to correct it as well. So I just want the council to know we have addressed it, we're being proactive. Unfortunately, it happened and we're not happy about it. So when we go out to bid next year, we may be looking for a new company.